Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you tonight for the inaugural meeting for the Weton County City Council for the next four years of this term of office. Recently, this mayor and council were recently elected to serve a term here for four years. We hope for a very productive term, and we certainly appreciate you turning out tonight for their inaugural meeting. What we'll be doing in a few minutes is they will take their oath of office when they enter their office for the next four years, and then later after the inaugural part of the meeting, then the council will actually go into session for their first council session for this term. All right, we'll begin tonight with a prayer from Pastor Arthur Smith from St. Anthony's Basil's Church Center. Mr. Smith?
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you tonight, first of all, for life, health, strength, sound minds. We pray tonight, God, that you will touch each one of these council members and touch our mayor. God, we pray also that you will bring about unity in our city, unity in our government, unity in our nation, even as our nation is getting ready to elect a president on tomorrow. Help us to understand, even on Wednesday morning, that you are still in charge, and God will give you honor and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, and we pray for a productive four years. If everyone will rise, we'll take the pledge of allegiance to the Lord. I'll ask Pastor Arthur Smith to be the leadest in that pledge.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'll now proceed to the oath of office for the individual candidates for Starland Mayor Jerry Willis, who was recently re-elected for an additional term. We're honored tonight to have Judge Bill Derrick Lewis, an newly appointed circuit judge here in the 19th District Circuit, to administer the oath of office. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Willis, if you'd like to join, please.
That makes you look good. I, Jerry Willis, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Alabama, and the ordinances and laws of the city, so long as I continue to citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter, to the best of my ability, so help me God. I would like to thank my wife, I would like to thank my wife that has allowed me to do this. This is the third consecutive term, and four years on the council prior to that. Without her, I would not be able to stand here and do this job. I appreciate your patience, I appreciate you putting up with me, because it's not an easy job, and Jerry, I love you and thank you. Also, before these council members are sworn in, I've had the opportunity to work with one of these councilmen for eight years. I've had the opportunity to work with the other councilmen, the people that are here before you. They're a great group of people. We've been up and down some hills together, but I want to tell you, we have gotten a tremendous amount accomplished in the city of Wetonka with these people behind us, behind me, supporting what we are attempting to do and what we have done here in the city of Wetonka. Our future is very bright, and I want you to continue, if you will, holding us up in your prayers as we embark upon four more years. I sent a little text out to somebody today, it's been four years, and it's been quick. It's been quick, and we're about to embark on four more years, so we'll get there soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, congratulations, and let's have one more round of applause for the mayor. Now introduce you to the council elects as they take their oath of offices, and I'll ask y'all to step down here, so Judge Lewis can introduce the oath. There's Kevin Robbins for District One, Percy Gill for District Two, Rebecca Wynden Thornton for District Three, Steve Gant District Four, and Greg Jones for District Five. This will be a joint swearing in for your oath. You don't say "I," you say "State or State." Don't say "State or State."
I, Kevin Robbins, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of Alabama, and the ordinances and laws of the city of Wetonka, so long as I continue a citizen thereof, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter, to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much, and thanks to Judge Lewis, we appreciate you coming and taking care of the oath of office for us tonight. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the new council now takes its seat for the next four years, and we certainly wish them the best. Mr. Mayor, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Normally at this time, we would have invocation, pledge of allegiance, since we've just done that, we're not going to repeat that, so at this time, we'll have roll call.
Councilmember Robbins?
Here.
Gill?
Here.
Thornton?
Here.
Gant?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Okay, you received any packets of a copy of the minutes for the October 17th, 2016 meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, little second. All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose. Okay, those minutes have been adopted. And the new business? Motion to elect Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
What is your motion?
My motion is to nominate the captain from District One, Kevin Robbins.
We have a motion for Kevin Robbins. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose. Okay, Mr. Robbins, he's been elected to the Mayor Pro Tem, so that means that if something happens, he's going to take over, right?
Please don't like that.
Congratulations. Okay, Adam Two, if you have any packets, and the city attorney, if you need any explanation, should be glad to do that. Motion to adopt the rules of procedure. This is a process we do after every election, Office 2016, this is the first reading.
In order to provide an order of procedure for meetings of the Weton County City Council being ordained by the Council of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, and the procedure and all instances of meetings of the council shall be as follows. Section one, the rules of order procedure here in compliance govern deliberations and meetings of the council of the city of Wetonka, Alabama. Section two, the council shall hold two record meetings each month. Record meetings of the councils for general is held on the first and third Mondays of each month. All record meetings shall commence at seven o'clock P.M., except when a work session is held prior to the meeting. In that event, the council meeting may begin immediately following the conclusion of the work session, but no later than seven o'clock P.M. Meetings will be held in the council chambers in the city hall facility located in 212 South Main Street. The council shall have the discretion to change the date, time, and/or location of this record meeting as it is necessary or advisable. The change must be announced in advance, and notice must be posted and given at least 24 hours prior to such meeting. Section three, special meetings may be held to call the mayor whenever his opinions and complications may require it, or whenever two council members request in writing to call such a meeting. Upon the failure or refusal of the mayor to call such a meeting when requested, the two council members making the request shall have a right to call such a meeting. Notice shall include the date, time, and location of the special meeting, and shall be posted and delivered via email each member of the council, not less than 24 hours before the time set for such a meeting. Section four, notice given by posting shall be available to the public if posted on the city of Wetonka website. Notice may also be given electronically, transmitted via email to any member of the public or news media who has registered to receive notification of meetings. Section five, agenda items must be initiated by the mayor or council member, and must be received by the city clerk by noon on a Friday preceding the weathered meeting day. Agenda items must include actions to be considered by the council. Section six, a foreword shall be determined as provided in section 114348 of Alabama 1975. Section seven, the order of business shall be as follows. Work session, recognition preproations, citizen comments, and according to ordinance number 2016 dash procedures for citizen comments written in oral, reports from the community, boards, and committees. Public meetings, call to order, indication, pledge of allegiance, roll call, prebook minutes, old business, new business will be listed in the following order. Ordances, resolutions, motions to approve, bids, legislation, bid reward, contract and surplus, other items that require council action, notice about coming events, and adjournment. Section eight, no committee will speak more than twice on the same subject without permission of the presiding officer. Section nine, no person or nonmember of the council should be allowed to address the same line session without permission of the presiding officer. Section 10, motions shall be produced or writing when required by the mayor or any members of the council. All resolutions and ordinances and any amendments thereto shall be in writing at the time of introduction. Section 11, wherever it shall be required by one or more members, the yays and the nays shall be reported, and any member may call for a division on any question. Section 12, the mayor may, in his or her discretion, call any member to take the chair to allow him or her to address the council, make a motion, or discuss any other matter at issue. Section 13, all meetings of the council shall be open to the public, except when the council needs an executive session as authorized by state law. Council meetings are business meetings. Section 14, the council may need an executive session only for those purposes authorized by state law. When a council member makes a motion to go into executive session for a designated purpose, the presiding officer shall put the motion to a vote. If the majority of the council votes in favor of the motion to go into executive session, the body shall then move into executive session to discuss the matter of which the executive session was called. No action may be taken in the executive session. When the discussion has been completed, the council shall resume its deliberations in public. Section 15, a motion for adjournment shall always be in order. Section 16, the rules of council may be admitted at the same time in the same manner as any other ordinance of general and permanent operation. Section 17, the rules of council may be temporarily suspended by unanimous consent of the members present, and such consent shall be brought by roll call, and the vote thereof be recorded in a minute. Section 18, all ordinances, resolutions, or propositions submitted to the council which require expenditure funds shall lie over until the next meeting, provided that such ordinances, resolutions, or prescriptions may be considered earlier by unanimous consent of the council. Such consent shall be brought by roll call, and the vote thereof reported in a minute. Section 19, the clerk, the attorneys, the attorneys, chief of police, and fire chief, and such other officers or employees of the city of Wetonka shall then request it, attend all meetings of the council, and shall remain in council room for such length of time as the council may direct. Section 20, no audit or resolution of a permanent nature shall be adopted at the meeting in which it is introduced unless unanimous consent is obtained of immediate consideration of such audit or resolution. Such consent shall be brought by roll call, and the vote thereof reported in a minute. Section 21, Robert's rule of law, newly revised, the relevant condition is hereby adopted as a lawful procedure for the council in those situations which cannot be resolved by the rules set out in this ordinance. Section 22, any section of any audit here before adopted by the city of Wetonka which is in conflict with this ordinance is hereby repealed. Section 23, the provisions of this ordinance are acceptable, and if any paragraphs, sections, or provisions hereof shall be held invalid, it shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance which will remain in full force and effect. Section 24, this ordinance shall become effective from the adoption of the publication as required by law.
Mr. Burseri?
Mr. Burseri?
Okay, Adam Four, motion to designate mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city clerk, same chance, and official documents. Solemn. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call it favorable, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
Okay, that motion has been designated, the authority has been designated. Adam Five, motion to designate bank depositors, USMare Bank, BP and T Bank, First Community Bank, Rammel South Bank, PNC Bank, Regis Bank, Little Bank and Trust, and Wells Fargo Bank. Is there a motion to approve this?
Solemn.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Aye.
Motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose. Banks have been approved. Adam Six, motion to reappoint for new terms, 2016 to 2020, resolution to reappoint our city clerk slash sheriff. Do we have a motion?
Yes, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, as follows: The county master's of appointed employees hereby elected and appointed to continue to serve as City Court Treasurer of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, upon the basis of compensation as previously established for this position, approved and adopted by the City Council on this day.
Motion to adopt the resolution. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose. So, okay, you have been approved. B, resolution number 2016 dash 11, fire chief?
Appointment of fire chief, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, as follows: That Gregory Allen Wallace, an appointed employee, is hereby elected and appointed to continue to serve as the fire chief of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, upon the basis of compensation as previously established for this position.
I've been on the fire chief for 31 years, and I didn't know his middle name was Allen, and I moved for adoption under resolution. Second. Do we have a second? Do we do have a second? Yes, we do have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
Chief, there's no question. C, resolution number 2016 dash 7, three, please.
Appointment of chief of police, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, as follows: That Chief Danny Billingsley, an appointed employee, is hereby elected and appointed to continue to serve as chief of police of the City of Wetonka, Alabama, upon the basis of compensation as previously established for this position.
Mr. Mayor, it's with a heavy heart tonight, the chief is here on a night that his mother passed away today. I move for adoption, resolution. Thank you, sir. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? All in favor, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose. Okay, so, chief, I think I should. Adam Seven, motion to approve expenses to attend state and regional meetings and events for the mayor, council members, city clerk, city attorney. National meetings allowed, will require council approval. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to ask, answer a question as to why with national meetings, do we have to have council approval for national meetings versus all meetings, or just one of them, all the same? If the meeting is a training of council mayor, why is national meetings excluded? For sets out the council?
It's just been, often over the years, where it took council approval for out-of-state travel, and I don't know, you know, it's more expensive taking those trips, most of the time you're flying, so it's just more expensive trip, and maybe the council would like to have a better hold on that and be able to decide expenditures. That would be my thinking. Any discussion?
I'd like to offer a final amendment if the person made the motion allow. I would like that when I just commit with a national meeting, I'm concerned that in my opinion, it's important that council have opportunity to continue the application of bodies of whether it's state or local or national. I don't see much difference if it's going to enlighten the council to offer better service to the citizens of the city.
Okay, is the council unwilling to make the change? Do we make the motion?
Kevin, do you want to accept that? Um, yeah.
So, do we accept it when I deliver it to?
That it doesn't have to go before the council?
Correct. Yeah, that's what he's asking.
What did we do last time?
Well, it was added, it was added.
Does that mean it has to be voted on in the council?
The council will make the decision whether it works or doesn't, a group goes, or whatever goes. That's my thinking, and if that wouldn't do.
No, my understanding, if the council's not going to make a decision on whether we attend the regional meetings, why would we make a decision on whether we attend national meetings? That's the way I read it.
Where are your regional meetings?
State, regional meetings.
Well, that's, it wasn't that covered here in state meetings? State?
What I'm going to say, Mayor, is the way this is written is that the council will, the council does not have to make a decision on state and regional meetings, however, for national meetings, the council will have to get approval. What I'm asking is that it all, that's all the same, so that you don't have to get approval for attending national meetings, if we don't have to get approval for attending state meetings, it's all a training of the council.
I think council has already accepted my amendment.
Well, I'd like to ask the council members, something they haven't discussed this, if you all want to vote, only a week. Do you agree?
Okay, first we don't vote a week, because we really don't have any regional meetings.
No, that's what I'm saying, state or national.
It's not real. Can we table it for the next meeting?
States burning out hospital, won't be there, won't be there.
Can we table it for the next meeting? But, you know, discuss.
That's not what the motion is.
Councilmember Thornton, if you would like, would entertain a friendly amendment.
Since we did, since that was the second one, they probably want to just bring them all with the council, this is the issue, we're in the area of the country, so that time is a while.
Settle, counsel. Final, that, that work. Okay, so we're going to relax, and we're going to restate the, we're going to carry on, go after the draw, second. Jones, you have to stay, you're going to have to withdraw your second.
Yes, sir, I withdraw my second. And I would like to clear up that only affects the council, it does not affect employees.
Okay, and then, Councilman Robbins, you had a motion, so you would have to withdraw your motion.
I will draw.
Okay, so now we will entertain a motion to approve expenses to attend state and regional meetings and events for mayor, council members, city clerk, and city attorney, and national meetings, to have to have council approval.
I will make that mention.
Okay, if we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Can I, can I add an amendment?
Yes, sir.
I, I just, you know, you're the mayor of this city, I don't think you should have to come before this council to ask to go on a trip.
I don't have any problem with it, you know, if that's the case, I don't have any problem.
Just wanted to know that we did respect your position.
So, let's just leave it like it is without, you're a member, can I okay with that?
I will draw my amendment and my second.
All right, so, we have the motion, we have a second, we've had discussion, all in favor of motion, did you want to say "aye"?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose.
Anybody else got one?
Adam Eight, request for additional meeting dates, and the Dr. MLK Jr. Memorial Court will recreation center by...
Good for you, Mr. Counsel, I'll just stand at this location. First, I thank you for the opportunity to come back and address this issue. Almost a year ago, I completed the necessary paperwork asking for use of the MLK Center on the third and the fourth Tuesday of each month. I concur with that request, also ask that the usual fee for such usage be waived. Both requests receive unanimous approval. Again, in respect, I thank you again. This year, we had an occasion to ask for use of the facility for three additional days. That use, that additional use was occasioned by the fact that there had been some serious flooding in Louisiana, and we had had Hurricane Matthew, and as a result of that, we had attempted to collect some serious relief supplies. We needed three days for that committee to, three different days, for that committee to accept those donations. Part of that process, the initial part of that process involved putting together a flyer scheduled for the dates, times, and place. When that request was given to the city, the response I got was, one of those dates had already been asked for by somebody else, and I couldn't get it, which I understood. The other two dates, I was told that we'd have to pay for those two dates. My point in being here tonight is to say that those dates, although they were not asked for initially, they could not be foreseen because it was the facts of God that happened whenever they happened. And so my request tonight is that any time there is an additional request for usage outside of the standard dates, that one, I not have to come to the council and ask for approval, two, that the original waiver of the fee be applied to those additional dates as well. I'd like for the body, when I say body, I mean the council, to approve that request. In addition to... In addition to, and I'm asking that the remaining days of calendar year sixteen be amended in that fashion. Also, I also have with me tonight, uh, a completed, uh, package for calendar year seventeen reflecting what I just said. Having said that, I'll take whatever questions mayor or any council members may have.
Bobby, now, let me make this clear. You're, you're getting two days and you're asking for permission not to ask council to use it, for what purpose now?
Yeah, I'm saying, if, just like what happened in the last couple of weeks, I asked for, I forgot the date now, but I think it was like October twenty-one, twenty-nine, and November twelve. Those days were days that we had set up for people to drop off donations to be used for disaster relief. Those were the three days I asked for. And so I'm saying, should something like that happen again, I'll ask again that we have access to the facility for date X, Y, and Z. I can't tell you what those dates are, because I don't know who, one, if we're gonna ask, number one. Number two, I don't know if a disaster's gonna happen. And if it does, and if there's something that we're going to be involved in, then certainly we'll be asking to use the facility on that date, on some additional date. And I'll let you know what that date is if that happens, I can't tell you that in advance.
For humanitarian purpose, I, I, I don't see any problem with that, but I would have to ask the city attorney. Uh, I, I don't know that we can just give a, a blank check and say you can use it whenever you need to without coming back to us first.
No.
The mayor, I don't think even has that.
No, there's, here, here's what I'm saying. If something happens, just like it happened here in the last thirty days or so, I'll come to the city and I'll say, hey, we'd like to use the facility on date X, Y, and Z. What I'm saying about having to have to come back, I don't want to have to come back to the city council like tonight and go through this same discourse that I'm going through now. I have prepared the package similar to, uh, to the one I prepared last year, and it has that incidental usage language in this package that the package last year didn't have. And so I have that in here now, just in case that happens.
Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I can, I'll just like to kind of, I guess if I can update the council or someone educate the council on. Some of the council members may not be aware that historically the MLK Center has always been used for community meetings. I mean, and it hasn't been an issue before, and I'm sure that probably something back into some of the minutes from a historical perspective. But the MLK Center has always been used for community meetings, whether it's the NWA CP or civic meeting or whatever, and there hasn't been an issue, there hasn't been an incident where that's happened. From my understanding, that's always been cleared by the council before it was used, so it's not that someone just had copilot use of it, but it, it would always come from the council. But historically, there was never a charge to use it, it was just a place where the civic groups could meet to discuss issues pertaining to the community or issues such as Mr. Mays was talking about now. But it was just a place that you could go and meet. From my understanding, the city has, that's always been, I don't know if it's ever been in writing or anything of that nature, but I am aware that that, that has been the case for years. Um, so, I would like to see the council members and mayor to consider that as we're discussing this, and that's something I actually bring back to in the form of a resolution at some point. Whether it's the MLK Center, and I will hope that we continue that, that legacy that MLK has offered the citizens of this community, but I'll certainly at a later time offer a resolution that we at least consider having a location where citizens can meet without being charged for whatever purpose it is for the good and benefit for the community. So, uh, the MLK has always historically been an ideal place to do that. However, if it's a genetic, civic room or anywhere else, I would like to see the city offer a place where residents can meet without charge, uh, to, to discuss any business that's, that's good for the citizens. Or, or any other, uh, humanitarian services.
Any other discussion?
I don't think anybody would be opposed to, you know, when we come up, you know, raising, getting stuff delivered to take to the hurricane victim and things like that. Nobody would be opposed to that, but I just don't, I mean, can we give a blank?
Yeah, what is, what is the, uh, I'm hearing unspoken reservation. I'd like to hear the spoken reservation for why my request was not jumped on and approved immediately. From anybody?
Well, let me explain that for you. Uh, that facility is a city-owned facility.
Correct.
And for you to use the facility, you have to get permission of the city. And if you're gonna use it for free, then the council has gotta waive your fee, this charge, use the facility.
Correct.
And for the council to make that decision to waive the fee, they have gotten determined that the meeting or the assembly that you're talking about having there at that time serves a public purpose.
Right.
And that has to be in the minutes for that particular event.
What we had done, uh, Regina, last year, we had cited the government statute for that purpose. And in the package that I have tonight, I've again cited that government statute in here, and the only difference in the package tonight from the package of the year that we're currently in is that I put that incidental language in there because of the roadblock, roadblock I ran up against here two, three weeks ago. And I'm trying to avoid a similar roadblock if we get into that kind of situation again. And there is no way one can foresee any and every circumstance that might come up that would cause you to need to meet to discuss issues relative to the community, to the, uh, community. There's no way. And that's why the incidental usage language is in the new package. It's no different than any other language, I'm sorry, no different than the language in the current year's package, other than the incidental usage.
Exactly, well, they see that's what the problem is.
How, how is that a problem?
They already got a ruling on the other meetings. They already determined that they were waiving the fee because they deemed it deserved a public purpose for you to have the meetings there two months a week, I mean, two weeks a month. But to do this other, you're not saying, you're, you're, you're just saying that it could happen in the future, but you're not saying specifically what that is gonna be used for. So they can't just give you part of the launch to go use the facility for anytime you want to for any purpose.
Yeah.
Do you follow me?
I, I do follow you. Let me see if I can give you some clarity there. My request does not ask that I be allowed to use the facility for any reason. It does not ask that. The request asks that the use be for the same reason that the initial request was for. It's just that the difference is, in addition to the third Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday, there may be a need to meet on the fifth Wednesday, or the fourth Saturday, or the whatever Thursday. If something happens, then we need to meet on that for those additional days. It's the same, it's not like we're wanting to meet to dance, we're wanting to meet to talk about Halloween or anything.
So what, what is the purpose of the incidental meetings that you're talking about?
It's the same purpose of the purpose on the third and the fourth Tuesday.
So this is what you're officially meaning?
The third and fourth, yes. The third and fourth is standard meeting that we require for that. I'm sorry.
That is what our dinner program.
That is correct. This package again asks for the third and fourth Tuesday.
Which the council can approach.
It also asks for incidental usage, just like I asked for three weeks ago, for, uh, uh, October twenty-one, October twenty-nine, and, uh, November twelve. Those meetings were for the NWA CP's committed to conduct business relative to collecting supplies for disaster relief. And should we decide to do that again, or some other something again, this same body that has been accepted under this statute, this same body would meet on those different days.
So you're specifying just for disaster relief?
That's not.
That's all you're, that's what you're specifying. You want permission to meet over there, the city to waive the fee, or disaster related, correct?
Well, no, no, hold on, hold on, I wanna be clear here. Those dates that I asked for, yes, I said, I called it yesterday, the last request, for those three days. Those dates were for disaster relief. There may be a date in the future that's also for disaster relief. There may be a date in the future that's not the third Tuesday or fourth Tuesday, that's not disaster relief. That the NWA, that the NWA CP will be wanting to meet, and it will be wanting to meet, Regina, for the same reasons that the statute allows for. That's the point I'm trying, I want you to...
And you don't know when, and you don't know what the purpose is gonna be. I don't know.
Can I tell you?
What, what's happening is, this is not very clear. Someone that's actually part of, of the, your meeting was thinking it was only for disaster relief, but, but it's just not very clear.
It should be clear, Steve, what I'm saying. I don't see what's not clear about what I'm saying.
The lady here with you, you know, about that, she wasn't clear on it. She wasn't clear on it.
That's precisely why.
So what I'm saying is, I, I can't vote for something that you're not clear on yourself.
No, 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 no.
I, I see what it is, and, you know, I can't vote on it, because it's just not clear which, what, if, if, we just leave it open-ended, you know, who's to, who's to say if someone can come in and say, well, now, we're gonna meet about this also.
That's the reply to what I'm saying, Steve. And that's why I spoke again. There's nothing unclear about what I'm saying. And what I'm saying is, I don't want this council to think that I am saying all I want to do is meet for disaster relief. That's all I ask for thus far. I'm also saying, if this body, NWA CP, wants to meet for an additional date that's not the third or fourth Tuesday, and that reason is not disaster relief, but it is a reason that is covered by this statute, I'm saying I would like to have those incidental dates in here so that I don't have to come back like I am tonight to get a mother may I permission.
Mr. Mays?
Yes, sir.
We gonna, we gonna line this up. Uh, you've had numerous opportunities to speak to this issue, and it's become here to repetitious what you, what you're saying.
Was it a counter?
Go back, sir, sir, excuse me. Okay? If, if you come back to the pre-dates you were planning, one of them was taken by somebody else, someone had the name on it, and then you came back and requested the twenty-nine.
And those dates were requested at the same time?
I sent you an email.
They were requested at the same time, I didn't come back.
Listen, we gonna...
Would, would say it correctly, sir? I didn't come back.
Standing me correctly, you asked for the twenty-nine, I took the provisions of the wording that was in what the council, uh, uh, approved, and they used the word approximately two days.
That is correct.
And I sent it to you, Mr. Mays, based upon that word approximately, I may have a little wiggle from it. So I'm gonna take that and give you that third day, which was the twenty-nine, and you didn't take it, you didn't use it.
That's the source, Mr. Mays.
We don't have to vote on this tonight.
Wait a second, sir.
The request, our action is already taken on this.
Oh, wait, 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 Mr. Mays.
And the rest of the council...
Those three dates, sir, that I asked for, those dates were the same thing, only thing different were the dates themselves. The flyers, sir, that we were preparing for the collection of those suppliers needed to reflect all three dates so that the community at large would know when we were meeting, where we were meeting, and where the drop-off points were. That's why those three dates were there. When we did not get approval for all three dates, I couldn't make the flyer saying one day here and another day there, the flyer had already been made, sir.
Sir, the high school did, since we didn't say anything, we did it in the parking lot of the school. We had it done in the parking lot of the city, some of where people brought their supplies that were gonna be sent. Uh, there are numerous places you can do this, it doesn't necessarily have to be a building. That building is used for numerous events. Now, the events, uh, repass has precedent over anything that happens.
And that's in the contract, I understand it.
There is a repass. So, unless this council decides they want to, uh, take action on this tonight, uh, we're gonna move on. And, uh, you were asking, you were requesting to be changed. If, if they can stand by what they've already done, we don't even have to take a vote tonight. But I think you're, you're, it is confusing, we've worked with you, and we'll continue to work with you. If you have a situation to come up, you need another day in some kind of emergency situation, some fundraiser for something you're doing to help someone out, uh, you know, we can work with you, but I don't see...
We came to you just now, sir.
They voted tonight, if anyone up here is gonna take a trip, they gotta bring it before the council for the council to approve it. So it's not a, a big deal, that you could come back and request, and, and we'll be able to entertain that request.
I came back and requested.
We're going to move on.
So where does that lead my, uh, request, Mr. Mays?
If there's a motion from the council to vote this up or vote it down, we will entertain that motion at this time.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Because I, I, I'm kinda getting confused now based on the conversation. So, Mr. Mays, was your concern of the question, what I understood is that when you made the initial request to...
You talking about tonight?
No, the initial request to use the facility for, um, the benefit, that the date was taken. Am I correct?
One of the dates were taken, that's what I was told.
Okay, so, your concern is, if there's a situation that comes up, whether it's a natural disaster, whatever, the NWA CP wants to be involved in, is your concern that you would like to have use of the facility and not get permission for use of the facility? Or that, or that you can use the facility other than the dates that you were contracted for, those two nights a week? I want you to get clarity on that, because I think we're, we're all kinda confused here. So, could you help me with that, and that may, uh, everybody?
Yes, sir. I want to con, to maintain the two days that we currently have, the third Tuesday and the fourth Tuesday of each month. Fee waived. That's what we have now. I have asked for that again for calendar year two thousand seventeen. In addition to that, I ask for to be able to use the facility, fee waived, for incidental dates, but I can't give you what those dates are if they happen.
Based on that, sir, I follow you. Are you willing to, if the situation, nobody has, yes, yes, but if the situation happened, are you willing to come before the council and say, hey, the third Wednesday, the fourth Thursday, are you willing to come back before the council and make that request? And maybe there will be a shortness, I don't know if the council will have a chance to meet. I don't know how that process will work, but are you willing to come back before the council, the mayor, or whoever, to say, can we use the facility for X, Y, Z, and fee be waived for, um, the community?
I'm willing to do that, yes, sir. I was trying to get around doing that by having the paperwork drawn up, given to the council, so that I wouldn't have to waste your time like I'm doing tonight.
I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't know how we would do that. I don't know how we would do that and not have the council give permission for you to do it based on the situation and incident. I, I, I'm understanding you're saying you wanna use it fee waived, and I support that, but not knowing when and if, I understand the, the complication that that would create. So whether it goes before the council, and it may not be a situation where we would have time to meet the council, but at least the mayor or city clerk or someone to say, hey, this situation comes up and we may need to use the facility this Friday.
The package that I have for you, Regina. The package that I have speaks to what you just said, sir. The city would be notified whenever that would be a situation, and I'd say, hey, on Tuesday, on Thursday, on whatever, we'd like to use the facility for, yada, yada, yada. That's in the package that you have here.
That's the point, that would be, if it's something other than the two days that you perfected, we still have to...
I, I think, what I'm saying, Kevin, basically, what I'm understanding now, and it's hypothetical, but there may not be an option. So, so we meet tonight. And the situation happens, this, this, we gonna have a chance to meet at the council to prove, where I'm really feeling you say. What I'm hearing say is that he's asking, and I haven't seen that, so... Uh, what I'm hearing say is that if the situation comes up, whether the council meets or not, he can come before the mayor, whoever, get permission, hey, normally we don't Tuesdays and Thursdays, but this time there's a situation that came up on a Saturday. So, could I come to the council, I'm sorry, the city clerk or the mayor on Friday to keep the use of the facility, that's what I'm understanding.
Okay, let's do this, let, let's do this, do I have a motion to leave it like it is? Do I have a motion to leave it like it is, and he comes back to us if he, if he wants to use the building free of charge? I'm adjusting this, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Oh, can I have a second?
Discussion, we, we had a discussion.
Now, I, I, I need a second. Bobby, I promise you, you won't leave that door open, and, and you're getting the door left open this way. This is the best way.
All in favor of, of leaving, uh, a situation that we have in agreement with NWAACP as is?
Well, now, you just had a motion, I can rely on that.
I have a motion, and I have a second to, to leave it like it is, okay? All in favor?
Oh, I think it's, I don't think it's, I don't want it in motion. I think it would be as he requested in whatever it is. So basically, what I'm understanding is that, yes, that the contract would be the nights that he has already, but he has the opportunity to come in, in a situation of, right?
Right, that's in the package. Yeah, that's in that package, that's not in the package as is, Mr. Mayor.
You don't need the package.
Took an hour.
Don't need the package. You come back and make a request, just like the deal before, I approved you on the twenty-ninth, use the facility. You didn't use it, but I approved you on the twenty-ninth, use the facility, leave it as.
The package that you have tonight.
Our motion, our motion is this, discussion is over, we have a motion. Our motion was to leave it, the request, what the council decided before, to leave it like it is, he can come back, just like the deal before, and make a request on use of the facility.
Call any of us or call the mayor.
Okay.
I have a motion, have a second, we have a discussion, all in favor of it being on the second.
Aye.
Any of both.
Chamber of Commerce, approve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is your council. On behalf of two hundred and fifty businesses in the Wataunka area who are members of the chamber, congratulations on your, on your new car, welcome, and we wish you the best. Two quick announcements, uh, events that are going up, are going on this week.